Welcome, City Council folks. We're a full quorum tonight. We appreciate you all being here. This is the Bountiful City Council meeting Tuesday, July 28, 2020. And we did have a work session at 6:00 PM. And all of you need to know that that is also a public meeting. So we always invite and want you to know that you're invited to that 6:00 PM work session as well. We get into a little more discussion sometimes about some of these subjects that we have on our agendas. So you're welcome to come. But this is our regular session and we really, we appreciate all of you. I see most of you, if not everyone here, is in a mask. And I think that's really a good example of what they're asking us to do. So thank you very, thank you very much. We'll start tonight by having a pledge of allegiance and we'll ask Mike Mayfield if he would stand. President Mayfield, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the United States of America and to the American government. In this world, we are very free and just as well.
Thank you, President. We'll stay in this family right now and we'll ask Paige Mayfield to come forward. Paige, and I'll just say a couple of things that she may not, see if I just got it right here. She's going to give us a thought and it looks like a present to everybody. Oh, maybe not. But she's on the Youth Ambassador for Better Days 2020, and you're a junior at Bountiful High School?
Yes.
Good. Well, we'll just let you talk. Thanks.
Hello, Mayor Lewis, I'm in the Bountiful City Council. My name is Paige Mayfield. I'm a Better Days 2020 Youth Ambassador. I'm really thrilled to be here today to talk to you about the message of Better Days. This year, we're celebrating two very monumental anniversaries in Utah. The first, we need the 150th anniversary of Utah women voting under the Civil Suffrage Act. We are the first in the nation to do that. And the second is the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. Utah has always been a trailblazer when it comes to voting. Sarah Young in 1870 was the first woman to vote. As well, Utah is also a trailblazer for women in public office. Dr. Martha Hughes Cannon was the first state senator in the nation in 1896.
Didn't she beat her husband?
She did.
Thank you.
She did. Her husband out of office.
Yes.
This is a legacy that obviously the Bountiful City Council carries with great pride, continues on today. I'd like to share quickly through the message of one of my favorite Utah suffragists in our history, and that's a college shop. She is a Native American suffragist who spent the majority of her adult life in Utah. In 1895, she began speaking about women's inequality. And then when she moved to Utah in 1903, that's when she began working towards Native American suffrage. She also wrote Sundance Opera while she was in Utah. She spent the rest of her life working in Utah and Washington DC towards women's and Native American suffrage. And although she did not get to live to see Native American suffrage be granted in Utah, her legacy is still carried on by Native Americans activists today. I'm so honored to live in a place like Bountiful that continually strives to hear women's voices and Native American voices and incorporate them into our community. On behalf of Better Days, I have to present to the Bountiful City Council a Utah Heritage Box City Toolkit. So we hope you will be able to utilize this and we really appreciate you allowing us for today. Thank you.
Thank you. We haven't seen what's in the box, but we'll try to incorporate that into our new remodeled city hall when it is done in 2014, I think. So, well, maybe it'll be done in November, but it's been taking a long time, so it'll be a while. This is the time for public comment and what we do is for 10 minutes, we have public comment and each person has up to two minutes to come to the podium, give your name and where you live, and the time is now yours. Thank you. Susan?
My name is Suzie Becker. I live at 1188 East, 1650 South. I'm here to tell the council, I think we need to review our planning codes and update them, given in light of what happened on our property within the last few months. And Gary forwarded you an email, but just to recap quickly, I live at the end of a cul-de-sac. We've lived there for 29 years. Our neighbor also lives at the end of the cul-de-sac. We have, too, our homes are level and then the property dips down in the back. They have two lots and it's flat level land. But because of the way the codes are written, this neighbor in wanting to level his property in order to build a pickleball court, has built straight up a cinder block wall 18 feet without any setback, right on the property line. And even fences have height restrictions, even structures have setbacks, but this is right on the property line, straight up. All of this is just a towering monstrosity. The neighbors may have all just been appalled as truckload after truckload of dirt has come in to raise the level of this property and this wall that's built to support the dirt that is being hauled into the property. No one thought this could happen. The phrases that I've heard from neighbors are, "We're stunned," or "Speechless," "Unreasonable." It's a fortress. It's a battleship. It's a monstrosity. It's atrocious. My description is that I now feel like my backyard is like living in an industrial park with a straight up wall at 18 feet of concrete. So anyway, I just wanted to bring up the council's attention because we are looking to move and we've lived in this home for 29 years because it's not desirable. We feel like there's a significant loss of property value. And the last thing just mentioned is on a sewer easement and seven feet on their side, 10 feet on ours, and they were given a waiver. This is not normal construction. You have 18 feet of dirt. If we had an earthquake or something were to happen and those pipes are down on their side with 18 feet of dirt on top plus a pickleball court with a fence on top of that, and it would really fall to our side to be disproportionate or huge mess or, I mean, huge job to take that out. Anyway, thank you and thank you for the police for all they do.
Suzie, thank you. Next.
I'm Angie Smith. I live at 1659 South, 1175 East. I'm actually backdoor neighbor to this Mark Nelson's wall that's being built. I had my son go and stand by it. And this is what is going to be in the backyard. And I live far enough away that I don't get to see this, but when the Beckers move, who knows? And if the codes haven't changed, they could do the same thing to my property right in my backyard. And I think codes need to be changed. I'm Ms. Suzie. And also, another issue I want to bring up is I do live on 1175 East, which is 1500 South and then it goes into 1175 East around Celebration Field. And this picture isn't very good, but there is problems with parking on both sides of the street pretty much from March until November. This is what our residents have to deal with. Cars, only one car can really go by at a time. A kid is going to get hurt. It's just a matter of time. So I'm hoping the City Council can work with us as neighbors and the Parks Department to figure out a solution to parking. Somehow get parking there or maybe have less baseball games there? I don't know, but it's every night and we just feel like something needs to be done. So, thank you for your time. And I'll leave these pictures if you want them.
Yes, that's good. Just leaving right here. Thank you very much.
Hey, blessings in your struggles and your family. What, your family? Yeah, it's going face. So my name is Carl Moore. I'm the chairperson of two different organizations. They're both Indigenous-led organizations.
Carl, if you want to, yeah, I think that would help us.
They're both Indigenous-led organizations that are diverse in our board membership because we believe that we're all related. So I do come here as a relative to y'all and I wanted to speak particularly about the Bountiful Braves mascot, the use of the brave, even the name of a brave. So I just went there earlier just to look and see for myself what I could see. And I took a walk up that walkway and I saw a lot of things that were pretty atrocious. And it seems like they were there just recently because it says 2020. One thing I want to point out is that it said, "Established 1951." And I want to remind everyone that Indigenous people have been here long before 1951 and that Indigenous people are using us as mascots or our images in that way. Basically, what that does is it relegates us back in time. It means that we're only Indigenous, we're only legitimate Native Americans if we look like that part. And so that does damage to our psyche and it does damage to other people's psyche when they start relating those images to being what a Native American looks like. I also want to talk about the toxic masculinity that comes with the brave because it's like fight, bite, kill, you know, like win, win at all costs. I want to warn y'all about the perpetuation of toxic masculinity as well. And this in no way is a result of the Black Lives Matter movement. This has been going on ever since we have understood this issue. So I want to appeal to y'all that you get rid of the Braves. Don't use anything that's Indigenous. If you want to honor us, you know, honor us without having to say, "Well, we're going to keep your name in order to educate the people." Just straight up honor us in letting us in the curriculum and in going about that way. And I would love to come back, bless the place, you know, for future everything because I do believe we're all related and yeah, so God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Very respectful. By the way, I'm sure you know that these decisions will be made by the school district. They really go from Bountiful High School to the administrative group of the district and then to the district board for final approvals. So it's going to take probably a little time, but thank you for educating us today.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. Others? Oh.
Jaren Davis, 2845 Palma Way in Salt Lake City. While I'm not a resident of Bountiful, my heritage goes back here. Joseph Holbrook was a great, great, great grandfather, as was Jaren Tolman, whom I'm named after. I come before you with gratitude to Richard, the mayor, and Kendal for working with me and Kendal for suggesting that I come tonight. I've spent 16 years in preserving critical lands and open space in Utah. And I have a proposal where we would be able to preserve 160 acres, the Bonneville Shoreline Trail from Mueller Park to the Holbrook Canyon. Add two miles of trail. Preserve the Gun Club and the Bonneville Shoreline Trail below the Gun Club. And I have a written document that I'd like to present to you that you can have. It has my phone number on it. And then I will stay after and answer whatever questions you may have as it relates to this and look forward to a relationship in the future.
Thank you, Jaren. Anyone else?
It's so nice to get to talk to you guys. I'm Ellie Christensen. I live just on the boulevard. I am a student at Bountiful High. I'm going into my junior year. I'm a part of a bunch of different student activities. And I just want to say, there's nothing more that I love than Bountiful High. I am a Bountiful High student through and through. I've loved it since before I went to Mueller Park. And I'm here to appeal to you guys. I understand that removing the Braves mascot is definitely something that needs to be taken through the administration, but I just wanted to appeal to you guys as, you know, our City Council leaders and people who are here to represent us and lead us to be a community of togetherness and one that takes action to become better. I presented a proposal for changing the Braves mascot after the news story broke. And I invite you to, if I could share it with you, that'd be great. But right now, I'm really, I'm not here to prove why using natives as mascot is detrimental to everyone, like Carl said. At first, when I heard it, I thought it was a systematic issue. I thought we were just doing it wrong. I thought that we could just educate people better. But when I took the time to learn and really come to understand that, you know, having mascots at all, it hurts our psyches. It makes us view natives as less than, as people of the past, you know, it's really hurt. And so I'm here to just say, at Bountiful, we have a fierce sense of community and intense loyalty. But why do we have them? Because symbols mean nothing without the values they represent. And BHS stands for good values. We're motivated to persevere by learning, listening, and growing compassion. Sacrificing kindness are our creed. So we need to take this opportunity to become better. It was only a few months ago when we were in the news because of our good actions and the actions of our student body officers who always clean up the bleachers for the opposing team. Bountiful students are good and our example is lifted up as a positive influence in our community. The Braves mascot can't stand as that when it's hurting people. So please, I appeal to you guys to, you know, lead us as a community and help us to become more.
Thank you. I think is our 10 minutes up? I think we're probably just about there. Does it say here on my clock?
You're right.
Good. Well, thank you. Thank you all for participating. We appreciate, there is a stability here in Bountiful that is projected just about every time that we meet in these circumstances. Thank you very much. So we will look to approve the minutes of the previous meeting that was held on July 14, 2020, and I'll look for any corrections or additions and then a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of our meeting held on July 14, 2020.
Second?
Thank you. A second by Kendal. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council reports, and Richard, you'll start over there at this end.
Nothing to report tonight except that our transmission rate has been below one for a month. Cases for Paul.
Thank you. That is a good report. Please, Millie.
I have nothing to report other than to apologize that I made the mistake of forgetting that at our last meeting, I asked to reschedule the BCYC report. And so we don't have youth council here today, but they were able to participate in a great service project at the Bountiful Museum on Saturday and they had a really, they really enjoyed being there.
What kind of things did they do, Millie?
They did tours. They played games on the lawn. They helped sanitize the museum between tours. And Ma, excuse me, Marin Eubank was able, whose grandfather and father are Leathermen, she was able to, there's a weather, Kendal, and you might know more about this, there's a weather interacting station. And so she was able to kind of man that, so that was fun. They really enjoyed it. So I hope it's something that when the museum reopens for tours, that maybe we can do something more in the future.
That's perfect. And for those of you who have not been to the History Museum, when it does open, it really is impressive. It's an impressive building, but it's impressive inside with how they put that all together. We're really fortunate. Please, Kendal.
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And Chris?
Mayor, I'd like to report that our Bountiful Veterans Park is moving forward. This Saturday, we will be laying sod in 100-degree temperature. We're asking for any volunteers, like maybe a city attorney or, oh, that needs a little exercise.
No.
Well, you need exercise too, Mayor. We're going to lay sod at 7 o'clock Saturday morning. And the beautiful part of it is the sod has been donated, but the labor is up to us. So we're going to be doing the labor 7 o'clock Saturday morning at the Bountiful Veterans Park. I have one other item of mine, Mike.
Please.
We're very, very fortunate in this community to have a Bountiful Community Service Council. A number of the members are here. I had an opportunity over the last few months being with the council. I'd just like to report on just kind of what happened recently. Our chairman, Brian Potts, is right here, who runs a strict ship, and we appreciate him. We have a faith council, and I found it very interesting at the last meeting that the Episcopal Church has not been able to restart their monthly dinners. And we're waiting for a time that that could happen. And also, our council's helping with the repair of the Baptist church on their roof, which I think is a great, great opportunity to go forth and do some service. Casey Bowen has worked with the Department of Wildlife Resources and we brought a chipper in to chip wood up in the Mill Creek, Mill Park area up there to reduce the possibility of fires in that area. And so the citizens of Bountiful came forward. The chipper was devoted and brought there with trucks and a lot of wood was chipped and a lot of wood then was chipped and taken and placed around their yards, which I visited today, which was really, really something. So I really like to thank the Bountiful Community Service Council for the good that they do and so often they do this without a lot of recognition. Mayor, this is a wonderful group of men. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate?
Nothing to report except I'm just curious, how much wood did the wood chipper chip?
How much wood did it? Brian, how much? You tell us. Do you know, Brian?
I don't know. I live in Bountiful, South Lake City, and I live several steps.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you all. Yeah, you know that the memorial that is being built for the veterans is a private endeavor. And wow, it has been, it is really just moving at light speed, which is just wonderful to see. Thank you, Chris, and all of those that you work with that are so eager to see this come to fruition. Thank you very much. With that, I'll look for approval of the expenditures greater than $1,000 paid July 6 and 13 of 2020. And if there aren't any comments, then I'll look for a motion.
So moved? Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Well, we have, I don't think it's a very nice privilege that we've had, really, when we see Lorna here for this reason, except it is a celebration of what she's done for our community. You might have noticed, if you didn't, in the Clipper, is that Lorna and Marisha, our new executive director there of the pantry, are there on the front cover of the Clipper. And I was so glad to see that. And Lorna, why don't you and your husband come up? Lorna, just tell us a little bit about your experience. Why don't you get right there at the...
I need to get my Kleenex. I would be delighted to, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you, City Council, for inviting me and my husband, a board member, Wendell Wild, his wife, Mary. It has just been wonderful to serve here in Bountiful for these nine years. I've worked for 46 years in my career since the end of next week, and I've never been paid so little and had so much enjoyment and fulfillment as I have serving here in Bountiful at our pantry here. Your support has been just wonderful, all of you, in various ways, as well as the support of the community. Our mayor talks about our pantry being an asset of the community and we feel that way and we work hard to be that. We help people who are in so many situations that we couldn't even imagine the need that we have. And people realize through the pantry that there are people in need in our community in Bountiful. And we live in North Salt Lake. Our areas are viewed as being fairly affluent communities, yet we all know here that the need is great. And oftentimes, the need is invisible. And we've helped make that need more known. We've helped the number of people we've served over the years has skyrocketed through the donations and generosity of our community. The children we help in our Pantry Pack program, our child hunger program. We started that program seven years ago with Washington Meadow Brook in Adelaide, three schools and 155 pantry packs a week. And we thought we were big girls. And we now have, last year, I think, we delivered 107,000 pantry packs to children in K-12 and Head Start in Davis County to over 65 schools. And many of those schools are here. It isn't just Clearfield and Sunset. All of our schools here participate and those children look for those pantry packed bags of food to take home on the weekend and love the uplifting notes. Many of you have made them and we desperately need more right now. But the help that we provide comes through the volunteers. Richard Potts is sitting back here. He's on our board and a volunteer. His wife helps. We have over 200 people who volunteer regularly every week and hundreds who volunteer in the evenings. And we couldn't do this without those volunteers and without the financial donations and then the food donations. You might want to know that we distribute about 2 million pounds of food a year and half of that comes from our grocery stores. So you could help us. When you're at your local grocery here and you see the manager, thank them for supporting fighting hunger. Every one of our grocery stores in the area helps and we pick up six mornings a week there. But serving there is just wonderful. I will miss it, but my family misses me. And it's time to pass the baton. Marisha Aboskeider, our new director, is just phenomenal. She will add new things to what we do and bring her own spirit. We've been working together for several weeks and getting her ready to man the helm on her own and with help also from myself continuing in the board. But come by the pantry. If you haven't been there, come by. You'll feel a wonderful spirit and you'll feel a sense of love and compassion and hope. So thank you.
Stay right there. Now, I love that this is a lovely place with you and Marisha. I appreciate this so much. But these flowers come back to me every year. It's powerful, isn't it? You're loving so much. I think when I first came down for 41 years ago, I remember taking some cans that they needed for donation. And it was in a little room on the very west end of the church. It wasn't half this big right here. And where it is today, nor does it say that pure religion is helping the fatherless and the widows in their affliction. And we've done that in space. And all the people who have really been in need in Bountiful and beyond have been blessed on your service and really require the service. Thank you. Thank you, Millie. Thank you for all of them.
And our little assistant director.
Thank you. We've been all the way to that. We still do that for sure. Now, I'm going to see you on the way to visit, but I'm still going to see you.
Absolutely. I get to stay on the board and be involved in fighting hunger and helping with things. And you can't leave your passion behind when you retire or something like this. So I'm able to continue in another way.
Once in a while, we see the right person in the right job. You're a man. We just, that service is so good. Thank you. Brett, would you please come up? And bring your spouse with you as well and we're going to... Yep. Thank you. Yes, yes. I was just inviting you.
I've been trying to work with Brett for the last 30 years. I got to say, back in the 70s, when I started working with the Bountiful Water Department, the culture there was pretty rough. Me, as a green new missionary, it was kind of a culture shock to me. And as we got a little better, but not a lot, the first ten or so years, and then Brett showed up. And Brett wouldn't accept, rough language, Brett wouldn't accept bad behavior, even as a lowest guy on the toll booth. He fought that type of stuff. He received a lot of grief over it. But through the years, his... And, uh, but through the years of his example, the culture in the department turned out to be something that I'm very proud of. I just wanted to know of the fact he had that belief in our department. He's also a better teacher than I am. So when it comes to training sessions, I believe our crews have learned a lot more from Brett than they have from me. I really appreciated that, too. So I just want you to know how much I appreciate Brett's contribution to the city and contribution to our department. Proud to be his friend.
Thank you. Brett, would you, would you tell us, now, how long have you, how long have you been with the water department?
30 years.
30 years.
Not nearly enough.
Good point.
Well, it came to us as a shock to us, too, but opportunities come and, and they come and you, sometimes you gotta jump.
And what does that mean?
Well, I, I got an opportunity to do something that I wanted to do for a lot of years. Things are in the works. It looks like it's gonna come through pretty, pretty quick, so.
Well, we, we can't say enough about, again, it is interesting how one person can make a difference, like we've seen with Lorna. And what he just pointed out is that there's lots of employees in that department, but one single person made a cultural change to everything that's happened in, with that department. I've only known it, known it as, in these seven years, as how could it be better? How, how could it be better run and how could they have better people? And I guess maybe it wasn't always that way, but you made a great deal of impression with what you've done. We just, we really want you to know, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. I think so. This makes our city council time a little more fun. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Brett. And we'll, oh, we're gonna turn this last item over to our illustrious acting city manager, Daley.
I was live, sorry. Okay, is that better? Okay. Mayor members of the council here tonight to follow up on an item that was requested from the last time we met regarding the concerts in the park and coming up with an alternative, well, a plan for holding those in the situation that we find ourselves in with pandemic. I'd like to recognize Richard Watson again that's here with us, and he may want to chime in at various times for answering questions and so forth. Got a staff report before you that outlines a little bit of where we're at with the concert series. We've had a couple of the concerts that have canceled for various reasons around the COVID-19 pandemic by the performers or organizers. And so with the changes that have come along, and things do change pretty rapidly. In fact, I mentioned in here that the new guidelines that we, when I wrote the staff report last week, were version 4.8 from the state. I just went out today just to make sure we have the most current. And those guidelines were dated July 17th. There's now a new set of guidelines, 4.9, that are out there, that was dated 7/22, so just a few days ago. Reviewing those side by side, I don't see any changes in requirement for, as they pertain to concerts. And so that's what we're talking about now, and particularly concerts that have a non-seated venue. So we don't have fixed seats and that type of thing. So that's what is governing that. For your, from your direction last meeting, Gary Hill, myself, Brock Hill, and Richard met and discussed options for holding the concert series in the pandemic situation we're in, according to the guidelines that I've referenced, and now updated to 4.9 instead of 4.8. What we recommend for doing that and holding this concert series is to follow a few points that are in the staff report, and I'll just reiterate those for the public's consideration here. We provide notice of the public concert series on our website. The other ways that we've notified concert goers of the opportunity to come, we'll have notices on our website, social media site, Davis County Clipper. And at the site, on the concert dates, we'll have signs. We're playing on four different locations for the signs. We can try to catch every entrance point. And that would primarily detail out the physical distancing requirements that are required and to encourage people to do that. And that's one of the things that is required by the state is that we advocate for physical distancing and mask wearing and so forth, which were, by the way, as you've mentioned, the plan that we're doing tonight. We'll be marking sitting and standing areas around the, the stage so that there is a distance that is maintained by those marked areas. And that'll just be painted on the ground. And then it'll be plenty of space for families to gather and so forth, but within a distance that would be physical distance from their nearest neighbor, so to speak. There'll be an early entrance time for high-risk individuals that'll be provided. We're putting that at 6:15 to where they can come and get situated and have a little bit of a buffer between the others that would come, hopefully to have that taken care of for them. Performers and vendors would have the responsibility of taking care of their own compliance with the standards, which should include their own sanitizing, the other things that they would be in charge of, monitoring their health conditions and so forth. And so they would be in charge of all those things, and that would be on their shoulders to handle that. We're required to file an event management plan. I give, I've given you a copy of just a blank one that you can look through for each of the concerts. So it's not just a blanket, but one, one for each concert series. And so Richard will be filling those out. There is a couple of places in there I'd like to highlight for you, just because it's a little different and hasn't been modified from a couple of versions ago. But I wanted you to be aware of it, and I'll touch on a couple of things that relate to it. Talks about the details of the event, who to contact if there's a question, and what the performers have to do, the high-risk attendees signage and so forth. But the area I wanted to touch on was the record of attendees. Now, in the document here, it still mentions that we need to detail out our plan for documenting who's at the concert. Well, the new guideline, actually the 4.8 guidelines, as well as the 4.9 guidelines, mention that it's encouraged that we do keep track of who comes, rather than requiring that, as the forementioned. And so we're relying on that. However, what we are planning to do to be in compliance with that, should somebody say, well, you're not tracking it all. Well, we are by doing one thing, and that is using the Healthy Together COVID-19 app that is advocated on coronavirus site and encouraging people to download that. We'll make a general announcement about that at each concert, so that if people have not downloaded it, they can. That has the opportunity for the user of the app to designate where they're at. It gives them information about COVID-19, and if they have symptoms, various things for their benefit, as well as providing a means to have contact tracing should there be an outbreak that needs to be followed up on. So just wanted to mention that that's kind of a approach that we're taking to try to, in the spirit of keeping track of who is there, that's our best effort, in discussing an actual list of trying to get people. We didn't feel like we would be very successful in getting everybody signed up and who you are and that type of thing. So this was kind of a compromise solution that we come up with. The series of announcements that Richard or the community service council members otherwise would give are also attached. And he would probably make a few other announcements as well of a general nature. But some of those things, among which is that Healthy Together app will be mentioned there. He'll make note again of the signs that are posted and mentioning those, the early entrance, and to encourage people to not approach the stage, to not approach the performers for their safety, as well as the participant's safety, and mentioning the marked locations. And if they can't keep a physical distance, to make sure that they do wear a face covering and maybe encourage that anyway. And then that if they are experiencing any symptoms, they're encouraged not to attend. So those are the basic announcements that pertain to the situation we're in. But I'm sure that there'll be other things that Richard might announce. Richard, is there anything else you want to add? Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions from the council?
Is the state still using that app? Anyone know? Are they gay?
It's still what they're recommending on the coronavirus dot Utah dot gov website.
Okay. I had heard that they had disabled many of the features of it. We're not using it anymore. That must have been faulty.
They did disable the feature. There was a feature for, early on in the pandemic, alerting people traveling into Utah, asking them to quarantine for two weeks. And it had a proximity sensor to the border that was a little too highly sensitive. And so people that lived in St. George or Fairway or the Utah side of Windover were receiving that notification hourly upon movement from the kitchen to the bedroom. So that feature was disabled. It, it worked. It just really, really worked.
Okay. Thank you. So I present this for your consideration of adoption.
Okay.
I have a question for you. So the governor has announced that he's releasing 0.05 because, you know, it's not enough to have 4.9. We need to turn the dial over to 5. Given that we don't know exactly what 5 will contain, as we try to meet his August 1 target goals. But, but we're told that the 0.05 version will be released sometime this week. What's, what are your provisions, or Richard's provisions, for being able to adjust quickly concert between concert as new guidelines are, are released?
As quickly as the guidelines that we got today come about, we do need to be able to adjust in a hurry. I think we would probably need to be really good about communication to those in case there was something. And we always have this, if there's a performer that can't perform or something like that. In fact, one of the performers that is, the performer that was originally set for the 14th is not going to be able to perform, so we're having an alternative already. And so we're going to just make that as part of a communications plan. So that would take care of those kind of things. If there was a health-related change, that's something that we would probably just have to evaluate what it was and then decide how to best communicate that to shut down the concert, whatever it happened to be, and provide the best communication we could. I don't anticipate that there'll be anything like that, but things do change rapidly.
Seems like the motion should be that that is contained in the motion, that if we're going to go forward with the concerts, the motion ought to contain a provision that as, as things change, that these would have to be evaluated on a week-to-week basis.
Mayor, could Richard tell us which concerts are going to happen? Go up the mic, Mike.
Come on. First one is August 7th. So these are all Friday nights. And then 14th, we had Michael McLean, but he, yesterday, canceled. So the same day, we were able to bring in Vision Band. We've had them two years in a row before. And we have, most of you probably know Bret Hart. He's the drummer in the band. And then the following week, we have, I think, I have to call their agent tomorrow to make sure, Green River Revival. It's a CCR tribute band. That's the 21st. And then the 28th, is that the right date? 28th is in the summer. So those are the four concerts. We had one scheduled for this Friday, but it was the Beatles tribute band, and, and they didn't feel very comfortable in playing, so they canceled. Any questions on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Richard.
Who's on the 7th again? Wildwood, right? Yeah, Wildwood. It's a country band.
Very good. Good, good work that you're keeping that as a possibility for us.
It's been quite the year.
And your committee, we appreciate it. Any, any other questions?
May I make one suggestion? At the entry points, I've seen, I've gone to different restaurants or things, and they've had the QR code where you could just scan the app into your phone. So as opposed to having people download, just have it right there so people can just scan it really quickly, right when they're coming in. And then.
Yeah, we get the QR code and then we just have to print it on.
And just have that at different places so people know that that's just a quick way. So makes it easier. And I think when it's easier for people, they're more likely to do it.
That's a good idea.
And then as far as making provisions for people who are high-risk, I'm hoping, I'm just wondering how we'll really regulate that, and I'm hoping people won't take advantage of that when it's not appropriate. People that are saying they're high-risk when they're not. So I, I don't know how that would be monitored or if we even could. But that's just something, I don't know if you need to think about that from a legal perspective or?
It's like people getting on here at the beginning.
That's true. That's true. And then.
So maybe we can, if they want to, maybe we can encourage the face masks a lot more.
Yeah, just, I, I, I mean, I don't know how, just, just a thought.
Oh, one thing we'll be doing, so at the beginning of the concert, there's announcements. We'll make the announcements, but then 30 minutes into it, we'll do it again. And then the band said that they'll make another announcement 30 minutes later. So this will be mentioned several times.
Oh, wonderful. And then just one editorial thought. My, my daughter had a dance recital yesterday at the, yeah, at the Red Center. There were probably about 100 people there easily, and, and people were very aware in keeping their distance. And so I'm grateful that this is an activity that the city will be able to provide for families, especially for kids who have been cooped up inside for so long. So.
So in our meeting with Daley, Gary, and Brock, and myself, Brock is gonna make circles on the grass where they can socially distance. He'll be prepared for them to sit, and we're gonna rope off somehow the stage so people won't come up to the stage.
I know. It's very good. I'm glad that we're gonna be able to do this for the community.
But there were very few people with masks on.
I know, that was, but, so we have.
But they were socially distanced. They did a really good job of socially distancing.
So.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'll, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion that we adopt the plan as it's been presented, with the caveat that we'd be nimble in adjusting to whatever new relaxations or restrictions come our way from the governor's office.
Well said.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes. I just want to say one more time, thanks to the council and to the city for a fantastic fireworks show. And applause to the community as well. We were on the sidewalk just outside of the Celebration Park. People were keeping their distance, and nearly everyone had masks on that we saw. So, anyway.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Hey, and I got a beautiful email today about the fireworks. Somebody just wanted to write and say, that was the best fireworks they've ever seen. And please do that same, so thanks for, thanks for mentioning that. The, so before we ask for a, so we did get the no vote, so we, we got that. Hey Lloyd, would you stand up, just want, give us a one-minute update on City Hall? How's it progressing? It's, and, and answer the question, yes or no, is this gonna be done by November?
No.
Oh, you're gonna run through offers. Oh, you're gonna run through upwards. I saw glass going in. That glass looks really good in that building, if you've all seen it. The other thing is just the granite work down at the plaza. I know we had some pieces come, and they were still incorrect. But do we have the granite needed to finish the project? Well, Lloyd, that is a great report. Thank you.
And we never take Lloyd for granite.
We never take him for granite. Perfect. That's your perfect ending. So I'll look for an adjournment.
Move to retract my last comment. Answer it, you're...
It's too late. It's on for the permanent...
Second to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dismissed. Oh.